A call to order our city council meeting. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call Sylvia.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Harris?
Here.
Counselor King?
Here.
Counselor Kuiper?
Here.
Counselor Garland?
Here.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson is absent.
Thank you. So I have, before we do our approval of the agenda, I have a little bit of a change that our attorney has recommended. So, we need a motion during the approval of the agenda. At the end of tonight's meeting, the city council will need to go into executive session under O R S 192-6602E to discuss real property negotiations in relation to issues that arose after the agenda for tonight's meeting was set. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda after the U R A board meeting?
I move we add. Do we want me to say the O R S?
You can just so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you council. Sylvia, if you could add that to our agenda, that would be fantastic. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you council. Consent agenda, approval of May 2nd, 2017, city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2017-036, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with TKW for municipal audit services. Resolution 2017-037, appointing Randy Mifflin to the library advisory board. Resolution 2017-038, appointing Deann Wells to the library advisory board. Resolution 2017-039, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Blackline Incorporated for the 2017 Slurry Seal Program. Resolution 2017-040, authorizing the city manager to renew an I G A with the Broadband Users Group for telecommunications services. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you council. Citizen comments? Do I have any citizen comments? Pat Donan?
My name is Pat Donan, and I'm here because of your municipal court. I find that this is a serious flaw in what's happening in this city. And you'll have the backup. I've sent information, I've already contacted both the city attorney and city manager. I would direct it to you under the chapter 36 and 33, I believe, of the charter. You're responsible for the municipal court and the hiring and firing of the judge. The judge, in my case, denied me access to two subpoenaed expert witnesses. And his excuse was, not lawful, but his excuse was he would only accept legal attorneys as expert witnesses. That's bull of bull. There's no way you can find it anywhere, and he denied me my right to be able to defend myself. I had an expert that would have eaten him alive. And he's been aware that your court is not a court of records for about four years, and you're in jeopardy. And mayor, this is a city business. You're dealing $1.3 million at least a year in traffic violations, and your court is not properly set up to accept that. I answered it in there. I wanted to have a meeting with your selection of persons and any staff member to correct this, or things will happen that I don't think you like it. You have a number of cities in the state now that have municipal courts, and they are court of records. You have five of them in this area. You have Beaverton, Lake Oswego, Westland, Milwaukee, St. Helens. You aren't one, and you better become one. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, is that for a public comment?
This is for a new business mayor.
New business, okay, all right. Any other citizen comments? Okay, I'll close the citizen comment time. Presentation, introduction of 2017 Robin Hood Festival Made Marian Court. Yay! So exciting! Okay, so normally we have, sorry, I get really excited about this part. Thank you for coming tonight. So, I'd like to invite council to come down so that we can welcome our special guest tonight. And Christine?
Good evening, Mayor Clark, Sherwood Public members, so is the audience tonight in Sherwood, Washington, D C. I'm Christine Mulkey, chaperone for the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival Made Marian Court. And I'm pleased to come before you tonight to present to you the 2017 Made Marian Courts. The fine young women of this court are very proud to have become this year's ambassadors of the City of Sherwood and of our community's events. I would like to begin the court's presentation with our Made Marian and her senior court. Whitney Gregor is a junior at Sherwood High School, where she's a member of the National Honor Society, model United Nations, concert choir, and a varsity cheerleader. Occasionally, you can hear Whitney singing the National Anthem before high school football -- at basketball games. For years, she's been volunteering with preschoolers at her church and also volunteers with her Girl Scout troop. In her free time, she enjoys singing while playing the piano, jogging with her dog, and spending time with family and friends. Whitney Gregor. Kelsey Hardy is an eighth grader at Laurel Ridge Middle School. She plays the flute in band, has taken violin lessons since third grade, and recently started taking piano lessons. In her free time, Kelsey volunteers at Northwest Children's Outreach. She is a part of Girl Scouts and is working toward earning her Silver Award, 50 hours of community service. She enjoys playing tennis and takes a contemporary dance class. Kelsey Hardy. Jessica Mulkey is a junior at Sherwood High School, where she's involved in marching band, jazz band, wind ensemble, National Honor Society, and varsity tennis. Jessica loves playing keyboard on the worship team and is looking forward to serving in Alaska this summer on a missions trip. Jessica believes that Robin Hood Festival is a large part of what makes living in Sherwood so great, giving our small city a sense of unique identity. Jessica Mulkey. Sophia Mulkey is an eighth grader at Laurel Ridge Middle School, where she enjoys singing in choir. She also enjoys singing and dancing in her V P A show choir. She also enjoys singing and dancing down the ski slopes, singing and dancing as she plays tennis, singing and dancing with her dog Winter, and singing while she plays the piano. She loves singing harmony on her worship team at church and often leads the kids' church services. Sophia Mulkey. Complementing the Made Marian Senior Court is the Made Marian Junior Court. This year, these young ladies come from Edie Ridge and Hopkins. Sophie Fletcher is a third grader at Edie Ridge Elementary, where she is involved in Mileage Club, Liam's Club, and the Talent Show. Her favorite subjects in school are reading, writing, and music. Outside of school, she loves to sing, play piano, ride bikes, play with her friends, and her older brother Maddox. She dreams of one day becoming a professional actress. Sophie Fletcher. Haley Linkhart is a fifth grader at Edie Ridge Elementary, where she is an Edie ambassador and sings in the choir. She has been playing soccer in Sherwood for the past six years and really enjoys the challenge of being goalie. Recently, she collected over 1,000 children's books for low-income families, hoping to inspire their imagination and education. In her free time, she enjoys art, writing, dancing, and exploring outside. Haley Linkhart. Hayley Ordness is a second grader at Hopkins Elementary, where she has earned recognition as a 4B All-Star. She's active in art classes, drama, dance, and musical theater. She's performed in The Nutcracker, Disney's Picnic in the Park, and One Junior Princess in the St. Augustine Juneteenth Scholarship Pageant. She also enjoys being outside gardening and camping with her large family. Olivia Pollard is a third grader at Hopkins Elementary, where she is an avid reader. Her favorite subjects are music, math, and reading. She has been playing piano for two years and loves performing. Olivia has a passion for people in need. She's always collecting donations to help the homeless and children in foster care. Olivia Pollard. And last but not least, she tells me she always has to go last because her name starts with a Y. Marina Yoshinaka is a third grader at Edie Ridge Elementary School. In her free time, Marina is most likely to be found playing her ukulele, reading, writing stories, drawing, hanging out with good friends, playing soccer, or playing with dolls. Marina is currently writing a book about animals in hopes to finish it soon. Marina loves to spend time with her two dogs, Jessie and Shelby, and her brothers and parents. So that is our 2017 Made Marian Court. Thank you so much for having us.
So thank you, girls, so much. It is always a pleasure to see you here at council and to see your coronation as well. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and we thank you for your service to the City of Sherwood and for representing us on the Made Marian Court. I just love this part of the Robin Hood Festival. It is such a joy to see these wonderful young ladies really serving our community, so thank you for that. And thank you Christine. You're an awesome chaperone. All right, we have recognition of Eagle Scout Award recipients. We had not heard back from our listed award recipients, so I don't know if they were able to come or not. So did any of our Eagle Scout Award recipients, were they able to come? No? Well, I am still going to read their names because this is quite a high achievement, and we love to have the scouts come in and hear about their Eagle Scout Award, you know, what they did to get their Eagle Scout. So I want to encourage that for all the Eagle Scout recipients to come on in and tell us all about it. But I will read your name and give you congratulations on earning Eagle Scout. Jackson P. Hicken. Seth L. Dummer. Nathan C. Stafford. And, this is a different one. Thank you. All right, that's it. I didn't want to do an accidental Eagle Scout achievement, so those are our scouts. Even though they're not here, we will be sending them their certificate of achievement. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, she gave me a switch up here because they look very similar, but I caught it. Thank you ma'am. So our next presentation is recognition of Sherwood High School student athlete, first-place state championship. Do we have Gavin Jolly here?
No Gavin.
No Gavin. Jolly, I'm very sorry, Jolly. All right, well then, I'm just going to read this because this is pretty fantastic as well. This certificate of achievement is presented to Gavin Jolly. On behalf of the City of Sherwood and the Sherwood City Council, we congratulate you on your outstanding achievement of placing first in state in the 6A Wrestling Championships at 120 pounds. Nicely done. Let's give him a round of applause. All right, we've got our employee spotlight. Joe Goll.
Yes, Mayor and council, I'm going to invite Rich Sattler from our Public Works Department to come on up. He's going to introduce our employee spotlight for this month. Craig Sheldon normally would do this tonight, but he could not make it tonight, so Rich is going to fill in.
Thank you.
Just so everyone understands, who may not be aware why we do this, once a month we select an employee to spotlight. A lot of folks don't get much face time or recognition from the council in terms of the good work they do on a day-to-day basis for the city. We tend to recognize folks that either went above and beyond, did a special project, or did something unique that we wanted to highlight, or someone who's worked for the city for many years, and again, doesn't always get a lot of face time at a council meeting. So this month is a Public Works employee, and Rich, if you can tell us a little bit about our employee.
Sure. This is Sarah Smith. She works in our utility billing department. Sarah has been with the city since June 8th of 2009, so this will be her eighth year coming up here Thursday.
Start when you're poor?
She started with us as administrative assistant, working in the utility billing department. She was selected out of 250-plus job applicants for the position, so she won out there. During her tenure at the city, she has been instrumental in the day-to-day operations of our utility billing department. Some may forget that the city didn't provide utility billing up until 2008, so we kind of brought staff on to bring utility billing back in-house. So Sarah has been instrumental on a daily basis with our utility billing department. A few of her job duties include providing great customer service on behalf of the entire Public Works Department. She's the front line there with some other staff that deal with all the phone calls that come into Public Works, just not utility billing, but parks, streets, water, those different components of Public Works. She leads a staff of three, carrying on the billing and payments of approximately 6,000 accounts in Sherwood. She manages delinquency and collections for the department. She issues leak adjustments and processes Public Works expenditure payments. Some of Sarah's qualities, she is a great listener. She has learned to do that over the years, listening to customers on a daily basis. She is compassionate and fair in dealing with customers. She has to make the decision on how we deal with delinquent customers on a weekly basis. For the past few years, thanks to Sarah, the city has offered a low-income assistance program. This program provides financial assistance to our customers on a one-time basis per year. So we did that without raising the budget. We were able to take some of our conservation funding, then move that over to low-income assistance. So thank you, Sarah, for that, and it's been well-received by some of our customers. Sarah represents the city on the Conservation Committee for the Regional Water Providers Consortium and participates in several outreach programs throughout the year, such as the Children's Clean Water Festival. Sarah is a 2005 graduate of Oregon State with a degree in business. Sarah is an avid traveler, having recently been to Singapore, Bali, Malaysia, China, and hopes to go back to Europe to visit Greenland and Croatia. So, Sarah Smith.
Well, I've seen Sarah a couple times at Public Works, for various reasons, to pick up one of the faucet connectors, and you've always been just fantastic customer service. So I definitely thank you for all of your work. I did not know any of those additional things that she had done, and that is fantastic, on finding funding for financial assistance. So that's great, because I'm sure you don't deal with any disgruntled customers, ever. Not true, I didn't want them to want. No. So that's a hard job, and to find a way to assist someone who's in need, that's fantastic. So thank you.
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, introduction of new city staff.
I'm going to invite Julia Hi-Duke, our Community Development Director, to come up. She has two new staff members in her department that started in the last few weeks. We always try to introduce our new staff here to the community, to the council, so, Julia?
And I could not be more thrilled to introduce our new staff for a little bit. So the first person I'll introduce is Joy Chang. She's our new associate planner. She actually started a day before Carrie, so she's our more --
Season.
Oh, season planner in the planning department. She comes to us from the city of Portland, where she was leading the development permitting services team, but before that, she actually spent 16 years at Washington County doing a variety of things, community planning, trails planning, parks planning, transportation planning. She was the Safe Routes to School Coordinator, so the mayor may recognize her from W C C meetings, and we're really excited to have her onboard. She's got over 20 years of planning experience and is going to be a wonderful asset to the development process and development community and the public, and I'm really excited to have Joy here.
Great. Welcome.
Want me to just go right into?
Yes.
Okay. So Carrie is our senior planner, who's doing the work on the Conference of Plans, so we're really excited to have someone onboard to work solely on that project. She actually comes to us from the city of Damascus, where she worked on not one but two comprehensive plans.
Don't you mean the former?
Yes, the former city of Damascus, and is an expert at de-annexing properties, apparently. So we're really excited, just the, obviously, the experience of going through that process in Damascus and the conference of planning, starting from nothing, and having two comprehensive plans is really going to be an asset for us here at the city. Before that, she actually worked at the city of Woodburn as well as the city of San Diego, so she also has some knowledge of how current development works, but we're really excited to have her leading that conference of planning process. And Carrie Brennike is her name.
Brennike?
Brennike.
Brennike, okay. Well, welcome, welcome!
We're so glad you're here.
Yay!
Julia is so glad you're here.
Yes, we've been talking about. Nice. Nice. Welcome to Sherwood. Fantastic, welcome, thank you. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you, Bob.
We were also --
That's hilarious. Nicely done. That's awesome.
We were also planning to introduce a new library staff person, but you'll see that person at a future meeting. There was a conflict tonight, you could --
Oh, okay, okay, all right. All right, well then, we'll move on. Resolution 2017-041, approving settlement agreement and mutual release with Clean Water Services. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I will try to keep this relatively short and sweet, but then answer any questions anybody has. As you all are well aware, there's been a dispute with Clean Water Services with regard to privilege tax or right-of-way fees since 2008, when the city enacted an ordinance imposing those fees on utility providers. More recently, since early 2015, the city and Clean Water Services have been working through the dispute resolution process that is in the I G A that we have with Clean Water Services. And that involved a multi-step process. Ultimately, we ended up going to several days of mediation with a professional mediator, and staff worked together with staff from Clean Water Services, and we came to a proposed resolution of that dispute that we're presenting to you this evening. The next agenda item that Joe will handle deals with how we deal with the issues relating to right-of-way fees moving forward. This is just dealing with from the beginning of the dispute until, actually, until July 1st of 2017, is when the change happens. The key terms of the settlement agreement are that Clean Water Services agrees that they're not going to raise rates on any ratepayers in Sherwood to try to recoup the amount of the right-of-way fees that's been withheld by the city. The city is going to make a financial contribution to the Onion Flats Project, which is an infrastructure project that benefits the city. The amount of that contribution is $507,435.07, and that is out of a $3.3 million total project. The rest of that is covered by Clean Water Services. Are there any questions?
$3.5 million project or $3.35?
$3.3 million, $344,427.
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Yes.
Can you go over the Onion Fat, Onion, Onion Fat, Onion Flats? It's a little bit of a strange name. Project, does that just benefit us? Does it benefit anyone else? How does it benefit us?
Yes, so my understanding is that exclusively benefits the city of Sherwood.
Okay, exclusively benefits the city of Sherwood, okay.
And that contribution, another good point, is that contribution is from a capital fund that is reserved for use for that type of infrastructure project as opposed to the general funds. These are restricted funds for this type of development project. That's where that contribution would be coming from.
And the funds can only be used for water projects?
Sewer projects.
Sorry, sewer. My fault, sewer.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And there are, in your packet materials, there is a description of the Flats Project and the overall budget, and then a map showing where the project is. Diane is here from Clean Water Services and can certainly answer any questions about that project if you had more specific questions.
Okay. All right, council, did you have any questions for Josh before I bring Diane up as she? If you had any questions for Clean Water Services, did you have any questions for Josh?
I just had, just to clarify, the privilege tax, right-of-way tax, it wasn't anything we imposed on our customers. This is something that we, as a city, were collecting from Clean Water Services.
Right, so the ordinance that imposes that imposes it on all utility providers that are using the city's right-of-way. Notably, that includes the city's own utility providers. We charge ourselves this privilege tax. Many utility providers choose to pass that along to their ratepayers. That's not something that the city has to say one way or the other end. We just impose it on the utility provider. In this case, Clean Water Services did not.
For the past nine years.
Historically, correct.
Okay.
So sort of in the same way if they buy paper, they have a line item somewhere in a budget for paper, and that's probably figured into their rates for everybody, whether it's paper, whether it's a lease on a building, whether it's utilities for any town that they're in, they have a cost of doing business. And how much of that cost they pass on to the customers is up to them. It's not up to the people that are charging them those fees.
Correct.
Similar, right? I mean, it's just the cost of doing business in Sherwood.
Correct.
It's not something that we singled them out for. Every utility pays it, including us, and every utility can choose how much they're going to charge back into the customers' fees.
They set the rate for their customers based on what their expenses are. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, I think the other companion resolution, which will come after this, is Looking Forward. And I'll get into specifics, but that's talking about they are going to pass the franchise fee that has been imposed onto customers here and in other jurisdictions that are imposing such a fee. I can talk about that a little bit further. So they never did that in the past, so they were not collecting that money. They're not going to continue to do that. They're going to raise their rates as of July 1st to absorb that franchise fee.
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
But they're not going to try, they're not collecting anything.
They're not going backwards to try to collect.
Right.
And that's what the settlement agreement --
And that's what the settlement's all about.
Yeah. And if we didn't come to terms, that was something that they potentially could have done.
Right.
Which is their decision. It has nothing to do with this council. The decision was made in 2008. I'm pretty sure that no one sitting here today was on council at the time when they made the decision.
I was.
You were, okay, sorry.
I just saw you looking at me.
Sorry.
We always do that with you.
My mistake, but it doesn't really matter, because you had the right. You had the right, as every city does.
But we knew it was the right thing to do. It applied to everybody. They just chose not to address it at that time. They just kept delaying, so.
I think what I was trying to clear up is there's some misconception that we have collected this from our citizens and didn't properly turn it over.
Right.
That's what I was trying to clear up, so thank you, Josh, for explaining that.
And so what Josh is saying is that is incorrect information being circulated via social media that is not right. So don't get your information from social media, unless it's the City of Sherwood page. Go there. Do go there.
Everything you read on Facebook isn't real?
I know, right? I know. It's very disappointing, but no. Sadly, it is not.
And Mayor, I do want to say, you know, the negotiation process, the mediation process working, and Diane's here, C D B S is a partner. They've been a partner for years. They're going to be a partner for many -- They're going to be a partner for many years. And this was a difficult issue at times, but they were always professional in going through that process. I mean, these are folks that we work with, you know, if not daily, some of us daily, but certainly weekly and monthly. And I think putting this behind us and moving on is going to be a big relief for everybody involved. And it does go back nine years in terms of when this issue started, so.
Well, and I think, the way that I look at it is, sort of going back to an old Dr. Phil-ism. Do you want to be right or do you want to be happy? So, you know, we have the right to say, no, we're not going to contribute to the project that benefits only the city of Sherwood. We're going to make you shoulder that burden, not be a good partner. That'd be right, we'd be right, but would that make us a good partner? And would that make this a happy agreement? No. I mean, the right thing in this case, I believe, and I hope Council agrees, is to look back at 2008 and say that was a decision that we had every right to do, and we are happy to make an agreement moving forward to contribute to this great project that services only the city of Sherwood and to move forward with our partners, Clean Water Services.
And if we chose not to, for some reason, the possibility that our citizens might have to start paying this back, might end up getting charged for this back, privilege tax?
Well, it's yes and no. They could, but Clean Water Services at any point can raise rates. So they have the right to raise rates on our citizens for any reason. That's within their right structure. And so I think that to say it's a direct correlation isn't necessarily right. Joe, you're she-
I think, I think Counselor King, you're right. One of the choices is if we didn't come to terms, if we didn't come to Young, sorry that I said King, it's all your fault, Dan. Counselor Young, is if we did not come to terms, we would probably still be potentially going down the litigation route.
Right.
Which I don't think either side really saw as a good solution. That's more time and money on attorneys. Clean Water Services could have, at that point, said, look, we're going to try to recoup all of the money that's been collected, which we probably should have raised rates back in 2010.
Which was their accounting error, anyway.
Which they decided not to do for whatever reason. They could have done that route, which would have been a pretty significant increase when you think about, well, how quickly do we want to recoup that? Are we going to do it all at once? Are we going to do it over two or three years? As the staff report says, it's getting near $900,000 that's been collected since 2010. So that's not insignificant money. It's one of the reasons we thought making a contribution out of a dedicated fund, not the general fund, that is only there for improvements to the sewer system seemed like the right way to go. They're not getting a full amount back, but a pretty substantial, in this settlement, a pretty substantial payment to help that project's funding. We thought, when we were negotiating with them, that seemed like a reasonable settlement. When you settle a dispute-
You settle.
You don't always feel like, oh, that's great. Both sides probably feel like, okay, this is a pretty good agreement. This will have to go to their board for approval, so you're first in line in terms of approving this one. Once you approve this, if you approve it, then the Clean Water Services Board will have to do the same thing you're doing in an open meeting and hopefully approve the settlement agreement. All indications are that they will, but it's not a guarantee until both sides' governing bodies say yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to break it down even simpler for me, in the, let's put it in terms of health insurance. If they have Kaiser, and Kaiser increases their rates for their employees by $10 an employee, and they don't either put that on to their employees to pay back, so, you know, when insurance goes up, you pay less from your employer, either pays for that or they pass that on to the employee to make up that difference, right? The $10 difference. So five years later, they say, oh, gosh, we've been paying $10 more a year per employee. We didn't increase that employer, employee's amount they paid, we've been paying it, and now we want the money back because we didn't, we forgot to do that, or we chose not to do that, or whatever reason they didn't put that $10. They could then say, we're going to increase your health insurance by $50 a month to cover the last five years.
Correct.
It's kind of the same thing, right?
It's similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, sure. In the Clean Water Services world, it gets a little discombobulated when you're talking about $900,000. But to me, when I think about it, like, every time my health insurance comes, goes up, which it just keeps doing, my employer usually puts that cost on to me. So my insurance that's being deducted out of my paycheck goes up a little bit and contributing more to my health insurance. But it's kind of a similar thing. If they chose not to, and then five years later, 10 years later, they go, oh, gosh, this is costing us more than we thought, let's go get that money back. It's kind of-
Yeah, it's similar. I mean, my only hesitation is there's, it's a little bit more complicated.
Right, exactly. Which is why I'm breaking it down, because it is complicated.
It's a little bit of a complicated history, and the relationship is a little more complicated too, because we do the billing for them. So it's kind of a more interconnected-
Okay.
...relationship between the parties, but, yes.
Well, I didn't have any questions for Clean Water Services. Did anyone else have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, just I want to make-
Oh, sorry.
We did, Mr. Claus submitted. I don't know if, Jim, are you wanting to comment on this one or the next one?
Is this open to public comment?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I can open it up.
Okay.
He did submit, and I couldn't tell whether it was this one or the-
All right, I'll open up the public comment time. And Jim Claus, go ahead.
First, I want to give this to you. Just about what my comments are just before.
Ooh, goodie. Thank you.
You got a pitchet spinner.
I love a pitchet spinner. Yay! Ethan, I know, right?
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. I want to tell you, I was here, and I know an exaction when I see one, and I know when it's illegal. But let me tell you a humorous story you're going to deal with. When you passed your billboard, your sign code, I told her attorney's Barry Elzin Hammond, that's a Title 42 U.S.C. 1983-88, violated on its face. You're going to get sued, and you're going to pay those billboard companies for their attorneys and their damages. We can handle it. They handled it, and that's how we got the billboards. They're just really lucky they didn't hit them for a million dollars in legal fees. That's what happened to the city of San Diego in a flash of brilliance when the mayor went backwards. Now, you're going to say, why am I telling you that? Because I can tell you the same story on Cedar Brook Way. The county had to pay back $644,000 to Sean Keys, and they now find out it's not an artery. Now, the reason I would suggest you do this and go along with your attorney is for a very simple reason. Up to date, we've not had an attorney here that looked out for our all-over financial interests. He doesn't have a single thing to gain by sharing a lawsuit. He doesn't take any more money home. That's what you get from a city attorney that's on your payroll. He's going to give you the best possible advice. I can tell you this is by no means one of the problems that the county's overlooked. That Clean Water Services is as good an outfit as you can find in Oregon. I mean, they are really managed well. Bob Cruz was, I mean, the current is really good. Diane had a Gucci Dennis. But I can guarantee you that if they negotiate a deal with you, it's really considering the best of everyone and staying away from litigation. And that's the blessing you have now. And that's all I'm trying to tell you. It's useless advice, but you have an attorney that is cost-conscious, is concerned about the best deal he could got, and he's not pointing fingers. You bring in a fee attorney. I used to have a conversation with his attorney, remind me of this. He said, you can win beyond a shot of a doubt. I said, okay, I can win, so we should litigate. I've got an offer on the table. He said, don't take the offer, pay me $250, and we'll win more. I said, but they've already offered quite a bit more. No, but it's better, that's what you get with fee attorneys. That's not what he's doing. He's really looking at your best interest. And my congratulations on that. My congratulations that you're working with a verified agency that compromises, never tries to burden their citizens. They're a good group. So my advice is go along with your attorney's advice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other? All right, I'll close the public comment time and bring it back to Council. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2017-041.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Council.
Thanks for coming.
Resolution 2017-042, amendments to intergovernmental agreement between City of Sherwood and Clean Water Services. Back to Joe.
So this, I'll keep this short. This is kind of the looking forward piece. So as part of the process that has been ongoing with the other jurisdictions, namely Beaverton and Hillsborough, probably within the last year, decided to change their right-of-way code and start applying franchise fees to Clean Water Services as well. So that got to, that got everybody, all seven jurisdictions that Clean Water Services partners with, to sit down and go through a process. As Clean Water Services said, we want a uniform system. If cities are going to start-
Oops.
Sorry.
That'd be a foot dial.
If cities are going to start doing what Sherwood did back in 2008 and are going to start charging franchise fees, we want a uniform system across all the different jurisdictions. So we negotiated that at the table with all seven jurisdictions. Hillsborough has already passed this amendment. Beaverton is considering a similar amendment tonight at their city council meeting. The Clean Water Services Board has approved this amendment as well. So the intent is that all seven jurisdictions will essentially pass this same amendment, which spells out how will this be applied. Some cities, such as Tuolatin, currently do not charge franchise fees, but someday they may want to. So this is set up for the jurisdictions that want to do it now and in the future. So this is a proposed amendment that's been looked at by our attorney and all the attorneys for the other six jurisdictions and the Clean Water Services attorneys, and this is our collective wisdom in terms of looking forward, in terms of how to implement this in the future. It's an amendment to our existing IGA, which goes into a lot of other factors in terms of our relationship with CWS. And that's essentially why it's needed, just to provide some clarity for the future, so we're all doing things the same way across the different parts of the Washington County jurisdictions within the CWS service area. Again, Diane is here. If you have questions for our partners, and we can try to answer any questions you might have about the amendment.
Okay, great. Council, did you have any questions for staff? Any questions for Diane? Okay. All right, do I have a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution 2017-042.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Council. City manager report?
I didn't have anything formal. I'm assuming one of you may talk about the different events coming up this weekend in town, so I won't talk about those events. Your next meeting in two weeks is largely budget-related. That's, you'll have, it's the Katie show, as we said.
Katie show. It's a Katie show.
Now that the Budget Committee approved the budget, the next step in the budget process is Council will consider it on June 20th and adopt the budget, which has to be done by June 30th. There was a whole slew of different resolutions related to that, but basically that meeting will be largely focused on the budget. So I just wanted to give a heads up, if anyone wanted to comment on the proposed budget, they will still have a chance at the council meeting on June 20th. There'll be an opportunity to provide public testimony, so, just as a refresher, so. Any questions for myself or any of the directors that are here?
Questions? All right.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of our Budget Committee members. You know, Council worked with our Budget Committee. We actually had an extra Budget Committee meeting because we were really going through the budget for the first time with Katie, and kind of with a little bit newer system that is all online, all available, all access, and so that was pretty exciting. We didn't have a lot of public testimony, but we had a lot of great discussion within the Budget Committee, and so I wanted to thank all of the Budget Committee and Council for working really hard to bring a budget forward to Council. So I just wanted to give Katie a great big shout-out, because I think that she did a fabulous job. I mean, just a really amazing job on the budget and was super patient with, you know, tons of very detailed questions. So I thought it was awesome. So, thank you, Katie.
I agree, and she knew 99% of the answers that we asked her without having to look.
Yeah.
Somebody would ask her a question, and she would just say a crazy number, and it was awesome.
Yeah. It was, it was really refreshing, and, you know, I think that, you know, yes, it took an additional meeting time, but I think that people left feeling like it was an open and transparent process that, you know, was inclusive and very informative, and although, of course, the messaging was, there's no money, but, you know, that's okay. That's, that is the message. We've got some challenges with handling purse, but, you know, it is what it is, and I think that staff, Joe as well as Katie, put together a great budget, so I don't want to forget Joe, sorry about that. But I do, I do, I really appreciate that. So, so I will go to Dan. Counselor King?
All right. Well, I have some good news and bad news. The good news is I found a house. The bad news, it's not in the city. I apologize. And I want to apologize to the people of Sherwood who did vote for me. I had not, absolutely not planned on moving at this time. The house that we were living in was a rental, and they have decided to put their house up for sale. So unfortunately for my wife and I, we were looking for a particular kind of house, which is a much bigger challenge in this particular community here presently, so we will be moving to Bull Mountain. And my next meeting will be my last meeting for being on the Council, so. I do apologize. It was not something that I foresaw happening at this time, and I enjoyed serving on the Council, and I really appreciate the support that everybody in the community has given me, so. I will be writing an article in The Archer, and so if there's anything further you want to read, I'll put it in there, so. But I do appreciate the chance to have served on this Council, along with the other counselors and people who have served on this board over the past years.
Well, thank you for your service, and life situations change. This is a volunteer position, so we understand life gets in the way sometimes. So we thank you for serving the time that you have to the citizens, and so could you, Joe, take us through maybe next steps, so the citizens understand?
Yeah, so Counselor King and I talked today about, he's going to submit his resignation effective July 1st, is that correct? So the first step in that process is the Council to declare a vacancy, which will be at your July 11th meeting. There'll be a resolution, basically, for you to declare a vacancy in the seat. Our city recorder, as the elections officer, has already been looking at dates in terms of the next election. I think generally, because there's so much time left in his term, more than 13 months, it's up to the voters to fill that vacancy ultimately. That's in November, that would be a November 2017 election. So once the seat-
So, once the seat is vacant, declared vacant by council, people can then file their candidacy for the November 8th election. I think the date that we're looking at is sometime in late August. Is that correct?
Yeah, the deadline being August 31st.
So, essentially, from July 11th, assuming that's when you declare the vacancy, until that date in August, people would be able to file for the seat.
Okay.
And then they would run in the November. And they would, whoever is selected by the voters would serve the remainder of Counselor King's term.
And I want to put my apology in, you know, that you guys will have to see signs again. I'm sorry. And I, and I did want to make sure that the city did not have to spend extra money for a special election, too. So, all those things were important to me, so.
So, there'll be, there'll probably be some cost for a November election, just because it's a non-general election, but it won't be as significant compared to a September or March election. So, it will be a little bit of a savings.
Okay.
And then the other issue that I've talked to Josh is, because I know this is going to come up with council, is do we fill, do you have to fill the seat during that, that interim period between when it's declared vacant and the election? And there's language in the charter, and I'll let Josh advise you at that point, probably on July 11th, about what those, those decisions are.
All right.
So, that's generally the way it's filled.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Matt with the Sherwood Main Street Board back since our last meeting, I think, May 11th. Great board. They were here, did a presentation last, I think, our last council meeting, maybe the one for, I'm not sure exactly when that was, but they are a board on the move, exciting group, and they've got a lot of plans for Sherwood, so keep an eye out for them. And it's tomorrow night, I will be attending the, full name correctly, the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board over in Portland. They're celebrating their 20th anniversary as an organization. I'm told there's going to be cake, so.
Wow!
Awesome. And we're also kicking off the update to their consortium's five-year strategic plan, which is exciting. If anybody wants more information on them, they have a Facebook page. Search for Regional Water Providers Consortium. They have some great tips, some water-saving tips, especially as it's coming up to summer. You know, how much water does your lawn need? Leaky sprinkler irrigation systems. Great, great Facebook page, so check it out. And that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Counselor?
Hi, sure. Yeah, I'll keep mine short, too. June 14th, next week, on a Wednesday, is the next school board meeting. I'm the school board liaison for city council. At 5:45 PM is the bond update. That's always interesting. Their bond team comes and they talk about all the projects that they're doing, not just the high school, but there's other projects going on that you'll see this summer that's part of that bond update. Then at 7:00 PM, there's the regular meeting. We also, I'm also the liaison for the Culture Arts Commission, and I'm excited to go to a retreat at one of our members' homes, Jeff Beasley. He's a member of the Culture Arts Commission. I know Counsel President Harris was on liaison last year. So, I'm going to be going to that this time on June 26th. Then we're going to be doing some visioning on another number of really great projects that will be coming up and the public will be getting to know about. The Robin Hood Festival Association meeting is also next week at 7:00 PM on Thursday at the Masonic Lodge. And this is, if you've ever been interested in participating as a volunteer in the Robin Hood Festival Association, this is the meeting to go to, because we are gearing up for the festival. And I'm actually in charge of volunteer sign-ups, so if you're interested, you can contact me. We've got lots of volunteers, and we could always use more. I also want to give a shout-out to Leah Burgess and Mary Wegelin and Leah's husband, Jason. The two gals, Leah and Mary, work at the Sherwood Center for the Arts, and they are in charge of the mini float this year, and they're doing an incredible job. And the mini float is for the Rose Festival Parade, which is happening this Saturday. It is during the Cruisin' Sherwood, unfortunately, but if you have a mind to go watch a parade and then want to come back to the Cruisin' Festival, that's a good way to, good way to do it. So, I'm really excited. They're doing a great job, so.
And it highlights our Sherwood Wine Festival.
That's right. The theme is, right, and the theme of the Rose Festival this year is called Brilliant. So, the tagline is Sherwood, the wine country's brilliant gateway. I think, something like that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Young?
The Wildlife Refuge, they, I understand they had a great turnout for their bird festival. And they also have their summer camp still coming up, and they have a few spots. My understanding is very few spots left for their full day this year. So, parents have been excited about that. I've been seeing that kind of on some social media and some school groups, saying, "Get your kids signed up." So, if you haven't signed up and you want to have something, full day for your kids to do one week this summer. And I missed the last community, community development block grant meeting because it was budget meeting for us, so I will be attending that this Thursday. And I had a great time at the Police Foundation auction. That, I've attended a lot of auctions in this town, and they really did a great job. The great stakeout, so, you know, cowboy hats and, they had a really successful paddle raise, which they were raising money specifically for chief, what do you call those things?
Ballistic shields.
Ballistic shields. And Gail Cutzforth was really dragging money out of people. She had a great tactic and raised an extra few thousand dollars over her tactic. Cruisin' Sherwood Saturday, come on down. I'll be working in the beer garden, 6 to 8, as will a lot of other people, I think, throughout the day, and pray for no rain, so the cars can show up. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Counsel President Harris?
So, I attended the senior center meeting. The senior center is in an interesting position right now, as it switches over from being run primarily by loaves and fishes or Meals on Wheels to the city taking over. And the friends of the senior center also will then be in flux as they figure out how much they want to be involved in, in the city and programming and all of that. A lot of talk about meals. The city will need to provide meals five days a week for seniors in that center. And so, it's really going to take a lot of volunteers, a lot of hands-on deck, a lot of food, and really kind of traveling uncharted territory while they figure out what they're comfortable with. They've been, the friends of the senior center have been together for a long time, and they've been pretty focused on some activities that they enjoy doing, outings, field trips, and what they call parties or celebrations. But with the city taking over, will be required to do different things besides that, including meals. And so, it's an ongoing conversation with that group to decide what they're comfortable with, where they want to go, how they want to get there. And I, I foresee that happening over the next couple of months, as, as the date for the city to take over the center really gets closer. And a lot of talk about how to manage low-income seniors who maybe can't afford meals but need the meals. That's exciting. And to that end, the Sherwood Cruisin' Group came to the meeting and brought us a $1,000 check that they donated in name of the seniors and helping with that process and helping with meals or, or field trips or whatever the friends decide that it would be best for. But they really wanted to focus on Sherwood and the Sherwood seniors for their group, so I just wanted to thank them publicly for that money. And then, I didn't get to go to the police advisory board, also because of the budget meeting. And I did get some information from the chief from that meeting, and it, one thing he wanted to share is that they are going to start gathering more input from the community about their service levels, and will start having discussions with citizens about future staffing for the police. I don't have a lot of detail on that, but we know that there's an interest in having more SROs, maybe more patrols, maybe less patrols, if you might not want those out there. But that is what the advisory board is going to focus on, it sounds like, for a while, and, and gathering information from the public about how they want to see the police department staffed and where they want to see more policing, less policing, that sort of thing. And, last but not least, I know a lot of people are graduating, but my fifth grader is promoting, and so I want to say congratulations to all the fifth graders who aren't graduating, they're promoting up to the middle school. So, that's an exciting time for the kids and a very emotional time for the mommies. So, that's all I have.
Buckle up! I don't know. And so, I have an eighth grader that's being promoted, my little tiny munkin, who's bigger than me. But, yeah, so I want to echo, I know, I know, buckle up, I know. So, yeah, I, it's, it's a very exciting time for our students, to watch them go through the stages, and it's, it's pretty exciting as the moms and dads get to see that. So, congratulations to all those being promoted and all of our awesome Sherwood High School graduates. And it's, it's going to be a pretty neat, neat weekend coming up. I wanted to highlight the art walk once again. I just wanted to, you know, get everybody excited about art walk. Art walks have been super successful, and people have really been coming out and enjoying, and they, they've not only had it at the art center and at the different areas in our downtown quarter that, that do house, you know, art-type facilities, either studios or creative spaces, but we've even had our, our restaurants have artists come in during the art walk, so that the, the last art walk, I had a great time going into Mason's. They had a special artist there and really highlighting different artists and artworks. So, so come on down to the next art walk. It is on June 15th, which is Thursday. So, not, not this Thursday, but June 15th, Thursday. But they're fantastic, and Sherwood Main Street always comes and helps with all the wayfinding. So, they're always there in their best if you don't know which way to go next, but start at the Center for the Arts, and they've got the maps of where to go. But join us for one of our awesome art walks. I'm, I'm still involved with Metro Mayor's Consortium as they continue to lobby our state capital, going through the different issues that the state is faced with. And so, I'll continue to work with the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium and lobby for the interests of the city of Sherwood. We have a, a special item that we're going to be rolling out, I believe, tomorrow, hopefully. But we, we have been doing a special filming that will hit the Sherwood city page that you really should watch out for. It's Out and About with Mayor Clark and Maggie Shapen. And we are doing little snippets of highlighting different things that are going to be going on in the city of Sherwood. So, watch for our pieces. They may or may not be silly and fun, and it's to get people out and interested in all of the awesome things that are going on in Sherwood. So, watch for that. I think it's going to hit the streets tomorrow. Maybe. I'm still doing my fireside chats, and we continue to also publicize those when we schedule them. Try to do it about once a month. We've done it once a month so far, and that's an opportunity for citizens, instead of listening to the social media pages, which may or may not be true. We found out tonight. Come on down to the fireside chat, and why don't you ask me personally, and I'll give you the truth. That'd be awesome. That'd be fun. So, try that. And so, it's just right here at our fireside in our library, and I've had some great discussions with citizens that have questions. And also, I have a staff person there that takes notes, so that if there are questions that need to be forwarded to the city manager, then he's able to follow up on those. And we've had an opportunity to help a couple citizens with some questions that they had about getting something started, and they didn't know really the process, and it was an opportunity for them to get in contact with the city manager and get those processes going. So, so it's been, it's been very well received. So, we are going to have a URA board meeting, so I'm going to shorten this out, and then an executive session after that. So, tonight, we are adjourned.